Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, March 9. If you're watching live on Monday, March 9, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can pick us up on Verizon or Optimum Cable TV and at PCTV76.org. And within a few days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast of this meeting as well as previous meetings also at PCTV76.org. Our next regular meeting is on Monday, March 23 at 8:00 with a work session at 7:00. But because we are in the midst of our budget planning season, we also have a work session scheduled for a week from today, Monday, March 16 at 7:00 p.m. on the subject of the budget. So we're at the moment in the midst of our budget planning, and we can have more to say about that in a few moments. But we are fortunate tonight to be visited by Senator Pete Harkam, our state senator. Welcome, sir. Glad to have you come to the Village of Pleasantville, as you have so many times. What is the world in Albany?
Well, first, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me a few minutes to give you an update, honorable board members. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me. We are in the midst of our budget process. We're in the midst of the virus crisis, as you know. So this is a good time to just bring our joint constituents up to speed on a few issues and then happy to take some questions if people do have them. So the first issue is the virus. As you've been doing calls with the county executive and his team, we've been doing daily calls with the governor's team and the State Health Department, and this precautions needed to be taken. But I am certainly one to try and keep this in perspective for people so that folks stay calm. You know, there are 98 confirmed cases in Westchester as of this afternoon. We're a population of close to a million. There are 142 cases statewide. We're a population of 20 million. So there are more people right now with the flu. And of these 142 people who have been identified as testing positive, many, many of them are asymptomatic. They don't have symptoms. They had just been exposed to somebody. So I'm not trying to minimize this. I think with sober minds, we all know this will get worse before it gets better. And we are planning. We passed emergency legislation last week authorizing the release of $40 million in special powers to the governor should he need them. He declared a state of emergency, not because the state is in chaos, but by declaring an emergency, it gives him the ability to have flexibility when it comes to certain rules. So that's how the state is proceeding. We are in contact with our school districts as well. I know there are a lot of questions from the school districts. We've been trying to encourage the administration to get back to the conference calls on a daily basis with the superintendents. So we'll have some update on you there. So, you know, that's just kind of the snapshot that I have, probably not a lot different than what you've been getting from George. Certainly, the protocol is deal with the county health department first, then state health department. If you need or any constituent school districts, or if you ever need direct access to the governor's office, to the state health department, please let us know. The school district, the same thing. We are in constant communication with them, and we are happy to be assistance. The second issue that I won't get into great detail with, but I raise it, it's a budget issue that could have a profound impact on Westchester taxpayers. As we know, there is a $2.2 billion gap in Medicaid this year. The governor has convened MRT2, the Medicaid redesign team. This is the second version of that, to try and find savings for that $2.2 billion. But on the other side of the equation, if you remember how hard we all fought to freeze the county share of Medicaid. New York State is the last state in the nation where there's a local share of Medicaid. Every place else, 50% federal, 50% state. Here in New York, 25% county, 25% state, and 50% local. So it's about 40% of your property tax bill is Medicaid. And if you remember back 10, 15 years ago, there were those huge property tax increases.
Forty percent of our county tax.
Yes.
Just to be clear, yes.
Right. So those were because of increases in Medicaid. So counties through organizations like NISAC were able to persuade the state to cap the growth of the spending in Medicaid, and then eventually there was a cap on the county share of Medicaid. And that's the way it's been. So the governor is proposing now to shift the cost overruns beyond 3% to shift that cost to the counties. And that cost is substantial. Furthermore, the counties really don't manage Medicaid. What the counties do is they register people, and they operate under very strict state guidelines. In fact, last year in Putnam County, 55% of the new Medicaid subscribers came through the state healthcare exchange. They didn't even come through Putnam County. So it's really tough for the counties to get control of that and to shift the cost to the counties. The counties that I represent, all of them, it would be equal to their tax cap or greater. So we are watching this very closely. In fact, tomorrow morning, I'm hosting a presentation with NISAC for every member of the legislature, both Senate and the Assembly, on this issue. And I just wanted to put that on people's radar because that is something that could come back to bite us here in Westchester. I want to talk about bail reform and discovery reform, things that have gotten a lot of attention lately. First thing I want to say is we have to remember why we needed to do those things. We had a system here in New York and other parts of the country where people who are presumed to be innocent were being incarcerated because they were poor. And most often, people of color, black and brown, who could not afford to make bail. We need to remember that there's a presumption of innocence in this country. It goes back to our founding core. You know, King George said, "You're guilty. He took your land, and he hung you." That's why we have this strong presumption of innocence. So it was very critical that we needed to reform the bail system because what was happening, aside from the psychological damage of someone staying in jail and worse outcomes at their trials, people were losing their jobs, they were losing their housing, they were losing their children. It was destroying hundreds of thousands alive. So that's why we needed to do it. There were bail was, cash bail was for all nonviolent felonies and misdemeanors, and the judge had some discretion as to monitoring and things like that. Some of the individuals who were let out on bail without bail were repeat offenders. And so we've had this cycle of some people repeating. The one thing that's important for me to say is, you know, the tabloids and social media are not a good place for me to legislate and get information. So I have been meeting very closely with two of the district attorneys in the counties I represent, Putnam and Westchester. I've met with the Westchester County Police Association, as well as your chief right here has been very helpful, the county PBAs, state police. We've been meeting with a number of folks. And the challenge we have is that some of the folks, there are two challenges. Number one, people who are recidivists, if you look at their history, many of them have 40, 50, even 60 priors. And people are screaming in outrage that someone like this is released, as they should. But just because it turned January 1st, where was the criminal justice system on the 50th time, the 40th time, the 30th time? So we, as a state, need to figure out how to deal with those folks. The other has to do with substance use disorder. Clearly, people who are going out and robbing, breaking into cars day after day after day are doing it because they're sick, they need to get high to get well, in their minds. So we need to do a lot more on the substance use disorder side, community mental health side, the harm reduction side. We just toured the state with our task force on opioids. I'm trying to get $30 million into the budget this year incrementally. We've under-invested in that area. So what we are doing is the Senate has devised a plan to fill some of the holes that have been identified to us by law enforcement and the prosecutors that would give judges a bit more discretion than they have now. And it's planned that the Senate's on board with, the governor seems to be on board with. The Assembly is not there yet. We hope to get them there. Hopefully, we can negotiate something into the budget, and we can resolve this. The other issue has to do with discovery reform. Again, the same similar premise as to why we did discovery reform. In fact, Texas and many other states have done this to give defendants equal access to their information. But particularly in places like Westchester that have so many jurisdictions, the deadlines just can't be met. So we will be recommending that we push the deadlines out to give police and prosecutors more time to take all of the traffic issues out of there. That was never intended to be there in the first place. And we want to protect the anonymity of certain people who testified. There is the ability right now of prosecutor to ask for an order of protection on certain information. But we need to do more, certainly in the area of 911 calls. It's imperative that we maintain the anonymity of 911 callers because we want to give them the ability, without fear, to report crime. And so that's one of the things that we're working on. I'm also working on a bill on the domestic violence side because you need to have, the advocates are saying they need time to create a safety plan for the victim, and we need time for the order of protection. So that's the other piece that we're working on. So that's, I think, I think that's a quick overview of bail and discovery. And then the last item I wanted to touch on was marijuana. It gets a lot of publicity and a lot of attention. I've had some great discussions with people here in Pleasantville, have given me a lot of good information. First, I just want to say, I don't know that this is necessarily going to get done this year. You know, because it gets a lot of headlines doesn't mean it's a top priority of ours. You know, if we want to do this, we want to do it right. We're not going to do it just to do it. And there are a lot of differences with the governor's bill. So last year, I was a proponent of waiting. Let's find out how other people have done this. Let's learn from their mistakes. Let's find out what the concerns are. So we had a public hearing up in Maye Pack, met people in their kitchens and their homes, met with school officials, law enforcement officials, healthcare providers, and we got quite a bit of positive feedback as to what the concerns were. Things like the need for DUI, more money to train drug recognition officers. People were afraid that incidents would get worse, and they didn't have the money now. Certainly, school districts were very concerned about risky behavior, vaping. They have a hard time dealing with the absence of mental health services that are available, funding available, whether there would be opt-out provisions from municipalities, zoning. And so there were a host of concerns that I took to the sponsor of the Senate bill. The governor's bill essentially was framework for legalization, legalize, and then the tax revenue would go to the general budget. And the Senate and the Assembly bill were much different. So after speaking with Senator Kruger, she addressed all of those challenges in her bill. So if you look at the new Senate bill, there's money for police to ensure the DUI is kept in check. There's money for schools to address both risky behavior and to educate young people to the risks of marijuana use and on the developing brain. And it would not be a mandated plan. Each school district could craft their own plan. There would be a municipal opt-out. It would be done through referendum. There are zoning abilities. And the thing that, to me, is critically important is 25% of the tax revenue goes to substance use disorder treatment, community mental health services, and education and prevention services around substance use disorder. As I alluded to before, we spent the better part of the summer and the fall touring the state. I co-chair the Senate Joint Task Force on opioids addiction and overdose prevention in addition to chairing the Committee on Alcoholism and Substance Abuse. And we found wide gaps in the system all over the state, but primarily, we have not been investing in our human infrastructure. We talk a lot about the needs for physical infrastructure, roads, bridges, transit, which obviously we need, but we have, and I say "we" as a society, it's not any individual or state, as a country and as a state, we have disinvested in those services for the most vulnerable. And you see it manifest itself throughout society in the rate of overdose deaths, suicides, homelessness, issues in the schools, criminal justice system. And so that money is absolutely crucial. You know, two years ago, we had more people die in New York State of opioid overdose and died on 9/11. And that's just opioid overdose. And we remember how we came together as a country on 9/11. Federal funding poured into New York, state funding streamed in. And, you know, we've been relatively flat with our funding in these areas. And so this funding would be a dedicated funding stream that is absolutely critical to those services. So, you know, I know folks are concerned about this issue, and I don't enter this lightly. You know, I come at this as a parent, like many of you. I come at this as a legislator, and I come at this as somebody in long-term recovery. So that is the lens that I view all of this. And so for me, it's not about are you in favor of legalization or not. It's, you know, what is the best deal, and can we get a social good out of taxing a product that people are using already? So I would be willing to support the Kruger bill, as I've said publicly. I cannot support the version that is in the executive budget because it doesn't address any of these things. And I think Senator Kruger was incredibly responsive to dealing with the concerns from suburban communities and amending her legislation to address a lot of the things that were discussed. Having said all of that, whether it will be in the budget or not, I don't know. We're not in a rush to. Our feeling, again, is if we're going to do it, get it right, or don't do it. So we will see. It's a political year. I don't know what people's appetite is for this. Honestly, we have not discussed it much. You know, we're grappling with the Medicaid issue. We're grappling with the virus. I'm sure in the next week or two, we'll start to discuss this internally, engage people's temperatures. But, you know, folks should know that this is not something any of us want to rush into, nor will we rush into unless it can be done right. So that's kind of my update. I don't think you want to hear about all my sundry water bills and other bills, but I'm happy to take questions.
Well, I don't know. What kind of policy do you have?
Happy to take questions from either the board or...
Well, let's start from our side, and then if there are folks in the audience.
Sure.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
Do you have a sense for the status of the marijuana issue on the Assembly side? Obviously, you're on the Senate side.
They are, the Senate bill and the Assembly bills are very similar. I don't know that the Assembly version quite has all of these amendments, but it does have the 25% for treatment, prevention, community, mental health. But these are the things that would be essential for me to support it. So I think that Senator Kruger and Senator Pupul Stokes are working very closely on their version. So I think they will be in unison as they go into negotiations with the Second Floor in the next couple of weeks. So the Assembly and Senate are fairly closely aligned, except for maybe a few details, but I think those will be ironed out.
Okay. Which touches on the bigger issue, and it's bigger than all of us, and that is the concern certainly among most of us on the municipal official side, that stuff like this is getting packed into the budget in many circumstances where it feels like it should be standalone legislation, treated and explored as standalone legislation. I suppose this sort of omnibus thing is a mechanism for various interest groups to get their piece of the action. But what's your sense of that and whether there's a way to, what would seem to me at least, rationalize this process in the future?
Well, I agree with you that, you know, the budget tends to be a place where if you want all of these things here, you got to vote for the goodies that were folded in. That's just an old way of Albany doing business. But last year, we pulled it out.
Right.
And this year, I think unless we can get the kind of deal that we feel comfortable with, with all of these things included, I don't think we're in a rush that we feel we have to do it in the budget. We can pull it out. You know, the focus is always to do legislation, as you all know, get it right. You know, if we have to slow down a little bit, let's slow down a little bit. If we have to not do it, we'll wait until the time is right to do it. But I'm with you. I don't think we have to do this in the budget, and if we need to pull it out of the budget, we'll pull it out of the budget.
All right. So the, and of course, municipal officials in Westchester, this year I'm the president of Wamoah, but also working with NICOM and the Association of Towns, our perennial request for an increase in aid to municipalities with, to respect to our audience of school folks who obviously we support as well, the annual increase in the overall education budget, which much of it doesn't end up devolving to Pleasantville. But the annual increase in the education budget is itself bigger than the entire budget of aid to municipalities.
There is a small increase, albeit an increase. In fact, it was in the executive budget. Normally, it's pulled out of the executive budget, and we, as a legislature, have to buy it back. It's kind of the horse trading.
Last year, the governor proposed to zero out the likes of us because the numbers had been driven down to such an inconsequential.
Right.
Number that if they get out, get rid of it anyway, why would they care? But of course, you know, in our case, the $50,000 or so we get, $50,000 is the sum total of our state aid.
Right.
The loss of which is a half point increase in our tax pay.
Right. And the other thing that we're doing is we're, in our one house, certainly increasing CHIPS funding, which is the road funding, and severe weather recovery money, the repaving money. So at least on the Senate side, in our one-house budget, we're going to be increasing both of those numbers because it has been far too long.
Yes. All right. Well, I am glad to hear that. Comments from...
If there's anything else I can go with.
No, go ahead.
So you made a very astute point to not panic people about the coronavirus. However, in terms of state preparedness, you may have seen this, there was a group of epidemiologists presented at the American Hospital Association meeting looking at if containment fails, the expected epidemiological effect of the coronavirus. And probably the most interesting part is that, you know, with a doubling time of seven to 10 days, I think it's been a little bit more than that here in Westchester, that you would expect to see something like 1.9 million ICU admissions by the end of May. There's only 94,000 ICU beds in the entire country right now. And 4.8 million hospital admissions, again, with there being about a million hospital beds in the U.S. Is the state starting to work to identify what we are going to do in the hopefully avoidable circumstance where standard epidemiology applies and we do have more need for beds than beds that we have today?
The state and the county and the city health departments have emergency plans, emergency protocols that if it gets to that point, they can ratchet up and whether it's opening new facilities, using areas of hospitals in other ways. But they do have plans to ratchet up. They have great, the health commissioner was telling us warehouses full of beds, masks, ventilators. So there is emergency equipment. I think one of the positive things about this virus, in a sense, is that, you know, young and healthy people, it may make you feel like you've got a flu or a cold, but the people we're seeing hospitalized are the frail, people with compromised immune systems and the elderly. So that will reduce some of that population. But you're right, the state and the county and New York City all need to be fully prepared for the worst-case scenario. You know, you plan for the worst and you hope for the best.
Okay. Senator, I just had a quick question. You mentioned the CHIPS funding.
Yeah.
I mean, driving around Westchester can sometimes be a little challenging.
Yeah.
Is there an appreciation in Albany for just how bad the roads in New York are?
And the surprising thing is, and you may agree with me, the worst roads are the state roads by far. You do a great job with your roads. Most municipalities do a good job with their road. The worst roads are the state roads.
Right.
Part of it has to...
And this state in particular.
Yeah.
Like I recently drove quite through a number of states, and oh my gosh, I mean, there are states that are much less wealthy than New York, and their roads are fine.
Yeah. Part of it has to do with old apportioning formulas. You know, that roads, districts with much smaller populations than our transportation region get a lot more money. And so we're breaking some of those barriers down. It's going to take a little bit more time. We're also looking to pass another billion-dollar road paving bond. I don't think we can do it this year because they're talking about doing the environmental bond, and we brush up against a cap. But if we don't do it this year, we have to do it next year because you're right, the state roads are absolutely horrendous.
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 Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let me add, and then we can open up to the audience. The perennial complaint we have about capital costs and their relationship to the tax cap. So capital costs for school districts are not included in tax cap calculations.
Right. And for yours.
And for municipalities, they are. And, you know, some would say that's because we have an easier path to breaking the tax cap with a majority of this board as opposed to a school district where they have to go to the public vote. All true. But again, speaking from my standpoint, it is just absolutely counterproductive public policy to create a disincentive for any government entity for doing what we ought to be doing, investing in our bricks and mortar. Hardly a day passes without some news article about the growing debt, the gap between New York's roads, bridges, sewers, water, et cetera, and the healthy state that they ought to be in. So I pat Pleasantville on the back a bit, not just this board, but many boards before us. We've been pretty proactive about that. But we're in a circumstance where in some cases, you're confronted with the right thing to do is to invest. If it would push us over the cap, we're willing to break the cap if we have to. But I will say, it is just stratospherically stupid for the state to say, "Okay, local government, we're going to try to create a political hit for you for doing the right thing."
Again, I would wholeheartedly agree with you. I think there's certainly appetite in both the Senate and the Assembly to rectify that, but it takes the executive branch to partner with us on this. And the executive branch has been adamant, very publicly, you know, that they don't favor changes to the tax.
They take advantage of all kinds of accounting chicanery.
Tricks.
In order to stay below the so-called 2% cap. And we not only don't have the levers of such chicanery, we wouldn't employ them if we had them. So there you have it. There's my soapbox. All right. Who in the audience has a question? We ask you to come up to the microphone to identify yourself for the benefit of the audience, and then you can... audience, and then you can state your question and sit on back down for the senator to respond.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Angela Vella. Do you need my address?
I think we do. Just to prove you.
Nine Sutton Place.
Okay.
So to piggyback a little bit on your
You might as well divulge your official status also.
I'm also president of the School Board in Pleasantville. To piggyback on what you just asked about, so the governor has in his budget basically capping expense-driven aid for schools. And I know the Senate's not in support of that. I just wanted to talk about it a little bit publicly.
Yeah, please.
Because, you know, this is a governor who a couple of years ago required us to use shared services. And BOSI's aid is one of those big ticket items for us that's an expense-driven aid and would in effect be capped with the governor's proposal in the budget. So we are vehemently against that. I mean, we see the value of shared services, we want to continue to use them, but to de-incentivize that is, just doesn't make any sense.
Yep.
So just wanted to put a plug in there for that. My questions were about the marijuana legislation. So, you know, we, our board passed a resolution over a year ago, you know, vehemently against having marijuana legislation be part of the budget. It should be separate standalone
Yep, agreed.
Legislation. I mean, it's too complex an issue. No other state has done it that way. It's always been a separate public referendum, or I think there's only one other state that the legislature has passed it. So we feel strongly that this should be, is something that should really be looked at. And I appreciate Senator Kruger, Assembly
Senator Kruger.
Senator Kruger, you know, listening to different, not just constituents, but
Our constituents.
Sectors. You know, like the health, the health sector, the police sector. I mean, because I know everybody's got their own, and schools, we have our own concerns. We definitely would like to see, you know, more restrictions on how things play out. But my questions are, I have two. So any licensed, evidence-based prevention entity or group, and that would include schools, would now be able to take money from drugs? So that 25% that you talked about going to prevention programs and schools for education, we can't really accept money that was generated through drug sales. So that, there's a problem with that. So I'm not sure if the Senate has addressed that at all, or if Senator Kruger knows that, but that's
Is that a legal precedent, or is that just a stand that you are taking?
I think it's a, I think it's a stand that most schools and programs take in terms of where they will accept money from.
So state ed also, for the education
Oh, it is?
Yeah. For prevention side, it can also have to do with their licensing? So if you can just repeat that.
Okay, so it's a state ed regulation for schools that we can accept money that was generated from drug sales. And for the programs, it has to do with their licensing and the rules surrounding them being a licensed provider of services. So there's an issue with that, so.
Those would be, if I could, it's a good question. The prevention, you can stand here. We're friends. The prevention and treatment money would specifically go to Oasis and OMH providers, who are licensed by those organizations. The money that would go to schools would be for schools to formulate their own plans, whether it be hire more social workers, to whatever Pleasantville would like to do. You've got a vaping problem. Every school has a vaping problem, you know, and you know best. You don't need Albany telling you how to do that. So the way the money would flow is this would be just another part of school aid that would come to you without the mental health or the Oasis ties to it. This is just another form of education aid that would come to you to enable you to hire the professionals and have the programs to help with risky behavior, prevention, education, those kind of things.
So it wouldn't come directly, it would be another classified school aid?
Right, right.
Okay. I guess that's a way around it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The other question I had is actually about municipalities. And so you mentioned that Senator Kruger's bill talks about opt-out. Are, what are the rules, would it be based on size of the municipality? Would any municipality be able to opt-out? Like how, how is that structured?
Yeah, the opt-out would be by referendum. So if
Just to be clear, we're talking opt-out from sales, not opt-out from legality.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
So if this, if this was something that Pleasantville did not want to deal with, then there could be a village-wide referendum, and then the village could say, no sales in Pleasantville, no licensees in Pleasantville.
Okay. Would that include growers? I mean, not that we have farmland in Pleasantville, I'm just curious for
I believe so. Let me, let me double check my notes here. I believe it does include growers.
Because that's the other side of it, the production.
You know, no, the opt-out is for sale, but municipalities can control the zoning of the growing facility. Now, these things are primarily indoors. They are hydroponic, they're organic, there are a lot of controls put on them, they use a lot of energy, they use a lot of water. So and essentially, they're agro factories. They don't have to be huge, but they're agro factories. And so it's not the kind of thing that would, would really readily be conducive to a small village anyhow, or a downtown area. So there are a lot of farmers upstate who would like access to this program. Or you could even, in an urban sense, if you have an old factory that needed to be reclaimed and retooled and reused, it could be used for the same thing.
Okay. One other comment.
Sure.
One other comment, it's not really a question, but so we received some information from our Pleasantville Strong Group about the University of Michigan study, that they've been studying substance use, and this is any kind of substance, alcohol, opioids, marijuana, other cocaine, others. They do, they've been doing studies for the past 45 years. The two largest increases that they've seen in 45 years was this past year, the use of vaping devices with marijuana. The year before, it was just vaping devices, nicotine, that sort of thing. So, and it's among high school age kids. So we have some real concerns about making this legal and the, just the normalization of it for our kids and the access to it that they might have. So we have some concerns about how this is going to be, to try and make sure that it's not marketed to children, that there's So, I mean, we applaud the governor putting into the budget, which doesn't really belong there either, but restricting flavors for vaping, because that's directly targeting the kids.
Yeah.
So we definitely support that, and we appreciate that he put that in there after the courts didn't like his executive order. So it's great that he's pursuing that, but we still have concerns about marijuana vaping and its use amongst teenagers. So what would the Senate's plans be for including in the bill, something to specifically target, making sure our kids are safe?
Yeah, part of the monies in the Kruger bill would, a year before sales become legal, would be a million dollar social media campaign addressed at young people, you know, where they're spending their time, you know, not, not on older network TV, but on social media, warning about the dangers of, potential dangers of marijuana on the developing brain. And just because something's legal, doesn't mean it's safe, those kind of things. I spent a day in Massachusetts. We toured some sales facilities, we met with school officials, we met with local officials, we met with the police, all very informally, so they would speak candidly. And what the school superintendent told us is since marijuana has been legal in Massachusetts, and this is one school district, that he has seen no increase in the incidence of teen marijuana use. You know, there are a couple, couple kids in the school who he knows were already using, you know, and those are the ones that they're trying to focus their resources on. You know, the big challenge he faces, like we do here, is regular vaping. He said that, you know, it's really a problem there, and that's the nicotine vaping versus marijuana vaping. So, but he's seen no increase in marijuana use in his school. Again, this is, this is just one superintendent. The police said relatively the same thing, that they have a high incidence of DUIs like we do here. They have not seen an increase in DUIs. So, you know, part of this also comes down
Is there a way to test for it?
Hmm?
Like, how do they know if someone's driving under the influence of marijuana? There's not really a test
No, but it's especially trained drug recognition experts. And that's what the money is for, is because, so an officer from Pleasantville to be trained needs to go to Arizona, I believe it is, and then Pleasantville needs to pay double time for somebody to fill that slot. It's very expensive and it's very time consuming. There's money for that. That's where we are right now. They're working on different technologies, but that's where we are right now. It's a human being interacting with somebody else and determining based on behavioral actions whether that person is under the influence or not.
That may be very difficult to uphold in a court of law, though.
Well, but that's
If you're trying to prosecute, or if you're trying to, right, I mean
That's what happens now. That's the state of where it is, of where it is right now.
I'm just concerned that there might be increased usage, or increased incidence of driving while under the influence in adults as well. And I'm not talking about kids at this point, but if it becomes legal, that may increase. And just because, you know, a certain municipality in Massachusetts hasn't seen that, doesn't mean that it's
Yeah, you know
We just don't know.
Right.
You know, anecdotal evidence is, it holds a certain amount of weight for that situation, but it may not
Right. The question really is, is legalization tacitly promoting something? And so, you know, and that's a philosophical debate that we all need to have. You know, it comes down to, to me, to a couple of things. One, marijuana is available in every high school in New York State. And if we don't believe that, we're kidding ourselves. You know, let's just ask the kids who go to any school, do you know the kids who sell the weed? And they will say, absolutely. So, you know, we start recognizing that this is a product that's widely available, that it's much easier for students to get into their parents' liquor than it is to buy pot, and will be even harder under the system. But all of these things, you know, we're in an era where we have a real problem, I believe, with abuse of substances, whether it's alcohol, whether it's marijuana. I don't advocate people do anything. But, you know, we walk out of this building, and you walk a block in either direction, and we're confronted by Budweiser signs, and Smirnoff signs, and all, you know, and Newport Lucky Strike signs, you know? So these images are everywhere, and part of it is us having honest conversations with our kids. Part of it is that we, in government, need to do more, and we need to get you in the schools more, that we can do evidence-based prevention training that is out there, but you don't have the financial tools to bring these programs in, especially with all the time that you're required to do all the other state mandates. So, you know, I'm not saying this
We appreciate that you recognize that.
Very much so.
But, so my, my other concern, and I mentioned it briefly before, is the normalization of it.
Right, right.
And that's
Noted.
You know, kids, they know at some point they're going to be able to drink legally. And so a lot of them, and I know because I have teenagers now, and, you know, they think, well, it's, I'm gonna be legal to do it in a couple of years, so what's the difference if I start now? Or if I start investigating it now? And I'm afraid that, one of my concerns is that they're going to start saying that about marijuana use, and that it will just make them start even earlier. So even if it won't be legal for them to do it, they'll figure, well, at some point it'll be legal for me to do it, so what's the harm in starting now? But there is significant harm to the developing brain, like you said, to start it prior to, you know, the age 21 or 22 even.
Yeah, no, I
Before their brains are fully developed.
I hear you, it's a valid concern.
So that's my concern.
I fully hear you, and I agree that we need to have these conversations with our kids. But sadly, I go back to the point that, to me, the marketplace has spoken, you know, the adults use is widespread. Let's regulate the product, let's reduce the THC content so it's less harmful. You know, all of these things that we can do legislatively. Let's tax it for a social good, let's have these honest conversations with our kids, because right now, they can buy it in high school.
They can get it. You're right. They have access to it. I'm not saying they don't.
So it's, you know, this is not, not without its challenges, and that's why we pulled it out of the budget last year, you know? And we literally spent the last year researching this to try and get it to the best place we can get it, and we're still open, you know, to more revisions, so.
So you don't anticipate the Senate wanting to keep it in the budget this year even?
I
Are you in support of pulling it out and
I'm happy to. I pulled it out last year. I'm happy to pull it out this year. You know, if, if, and I say if we do this, we have to do it right. We have to do it right. You know, a lot of states have done this, they've gotten progressively smarter as they've done it. Let's learn from them as they go. Let's listen to our stakeholders. Got great advice here in Pleasantville and other communities in the district. Let's incorporate those concerns, let's address them, whether it takes a week, a month, a year, however long it takes, let's get it to, we can, we can get it as close to perfect as we can get it, and we can get some consensus around it. But there's certainly no rush on the legislative side. Just to get it done, we want to get the right bill done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good debate.
Other questions from anybody? There being none, let me extend again my thanks, not only for your visit, but for the support you've shown for the village of Pleasantville. In the short time you've been our senator, very much appreciated. And we look forward to continuing this. There's a joint lobby day on March 23 of the New York Conference of Mayors and the Association of Towns, and so Corona-willing will descend upon you to comment.
Well, our office is 8:12, so we look forward to seeing you.
All right.
I appreciate the partnership as well, and thank you for a few minutes, and thank you for the discussion. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you, Senator, much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
We should take that show on the road.
Happy to see you.
All right.
Take care. Bye, Senator.
Bye, Senator. So, back to our regular agenda. I had a few announcements to make, and maybe the first one obviously is on everyone's mind, the discussion about the coronavirus. You heard from Senator Harkam, the perspective from Albany, but a bunch of us, both Eric Morrissey and I, and municipal officials around the county, were on the county conference call today with George Latimer, the county executive, and the folks from his team. And that call will be happening every other day for the duration of this issue. Couple of things that are clear, and one of them is that it's the New York State Department of Health that is the lead agency in this matter. The County Department of Health is, I think George Latimer referred to it as a sibling government entity, and in some respects, the County Department of Health is the boots on the ground for the state. But there is quite a bit of information that the state has, and some that the county has, that is embargoed to us. That's under discussion at the moment, but obviously, there are not only medical privacy laws in place, but also policies that the state has. So we're not, at the present time, in a position to report exactly the status of our own community. But what is clear, and what was clear from George Latimer's discussion today, is that of the 98 confirmed positives as of 4:00 PM today in Westchester County, the distinct majority of them are around New Rochelle, as you have doubtless read in the press. That sort of outbreak was related to a group of people who were all together at a bunch of different events. So it clearly has been more of a down So, it clearly has been more of a down-county problem, but we do expect that there will be an increasing number of positives every day. And indeed, there seems to be pretty good reason, at least, and I say this not as any kind of specialist, to believe that there are probably quite a few more positives than have yet been tested, both because for some weeks, folks may have gotten this and recovered from it, or gotten it and been asymptomatic and never been tested, and also because the testing business has been slow to get ramped up. The federal government had a bunch of controls over the availability of testing kits, and initially, there were not very many to be had, and there were only a few state labs where it was possible to do them. I think as of today, in New York State, they announced that the Northwell lab, Northwell being one of the biggest healthcare employers in New York State, was then qualified, now qualified, to be doing the coronavirus tests. So, hopefully, all that will be proceeding. Our folks, Eric and Noreen, have been sending out periodic reports, and Eric sent one out today, and that's a good segue to remind folks, if you go to pleasantville-n-y.gov, we really do encourage you to sign up for Village News. In the left-hand margin of our website, you can sign up for news, and at minimum, choose the general news, and so you'll get whatever reports we have. We're certainly nowhere near using it, but we also have an emergency notification system that we subscribe to called Code Red. That requires a separate registration, but now would be a great time. Sign up for news, sign up for Code Red, and also take a look at the Pleasantville Facebook page that will provide updates. For the most part, we're simply passing on information that's already available to you at the county health department site or at the New York State Health Department site. Eric, you have anything you want to add to that?
Just the advice being passed on to us from public health officials is quite obvious. You know, practice good hygiene.
Right.
And that's our best defense. Wash your hands, don't touch your face. If you're sick or you have kids who are sick, stay at home.
Don't go to work.
You know, that is the bread and butter of the response here.
So, cdc.gov is the Center for Disease Control at the federal level. Health.n-y.gov is the New York State Health Department, and health.westchestergov.com is the Westchester Health Department. So, the last piece of that, and it's a discussion that accelerated a bit today based on experience around the county and experience elsewhere, is the question of whether there are activities that we ought to potentially suspend during this time period. One of the things under discussion, and we haven't made a final decision right now, is whether there are aspects of our senior programs that ought to be canceled for this period of time until the outbreak recedes. I think it likely that we will probably cancel the annual St. Patrick's Day event at the senior center, which is a popular and fun event, but an event that draws a much bigger crowd, and perhaps not the best occasion, under the circumstances, to have a whole lot of people in a small space. But, you know, further to what Eric said, in the meantime, we are proceeding, and certainly plenty of reason to think, based on the comments of the governor, the comments of the senator, the comments we're getting from various levels of government, that the best thing any of us can do is be cautious and careful, and wash our hands a lot, use caution around other folks, and certainly, if you are sick, stay out of the way of other people, which is just good advice regardless of what it is you have. As I mentioned at the outset, we're in the midst of our budget planning process and have been meeting in work session with the various departments. Eric and Noreen and Mary Schwartz and Noreen McGinty in our finance department have been doing the same, business assembling the budget. So, Eric, why don't you just give folks an idea of the timeline?
Sure. So, we are wrapping up our individual meetings with department heads on a staff level. Each Monday, we've been bringing in different department heads to go over their departmental budgets with the board. The next step will be filing the tentative budget, which is, the deadline is March 20th. So, that is the administration's, on the staff side's, budget that we recommend to the board. From there, we will schedule a public hearing, which is April 13. We'll also have the budget presentation then, and changes can be made to the budget following that. The budget must be adopted by May 1, and everything is on track, and things are looking quite good, and all indications are we will have a tax cap compliant budget.
All right. So, more on that soon, and mark your calendars for the exciting public hearing.
April 13.
Couple of other things to note. As we have noted, some meetings running, but really want to encourage folks to participate in our food scrap recycling business. You can come to the third floor of Village Hall and pick up for $25 a grade starter kit, which is a large container and a small container for countertop use, along with an initial supply of compostable bags and a little booklet that describes how to do it and what to do. We are collecting that stuff down at the recycling center every Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00, or 8:00 to 1:00? 9:00 to 1:00?
Nine.
9:00 to 1:00.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, 9:00 to 3:00.
Oh, 3:00.
I'll end right.
Yeah, 9:00 to 3:00, six hours.
Third time's a charm. Down at the recycling center, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturdays. And folks who might be a little cautious about it, I can report, we've been doing it in my household. It's surprisingly easy and surprisingly clean and straightforward. Just tie up the small bag when it's filled up and put it in a large container, and on Saturday, take it down and dump it. And it is quite surprising, you know, I would have viewed us as pretty careful about wasting the food, but when you take things like potato peels and clam shells and all of that, it's a whole lot of stuff and a whole lot of weight, and it really is a big help. So, you don't have to buy the starter kit to do this, but it's a great way to get a start. If you are so inclined, come up to the third floor to do it. So, that's a nice segue into a report the county gave us about the overall recycling program, pretty impressive numbers, that in the year 2019, Westchester County collected 140 million pounds of recyclables. That reflects all of the work that goes on in all of the various communities. So, 140 million pounds of recyclables were diverted from the waste stream, and perhaps equally important, maybe even more important, 2,690,000 pounds of hazardous materials. So, important to note that folks can take hazardous materials, things that are otherwise dangerous to get rid of, and get rid of it at the county's household material recovery facility, which is in Valhalla. So, again, go to westchestergov.com and Google the recycling program and hazardous material recovery, and you can read about what they accept, when they accept it, and it's a great way to get rid of things that might otherwise harm the environment if you threw it out. So, good news on that front as well. We're making progress on a couple of significant projects. I say progress, we hope we're making progress. Do you want to update the timeline on the Manville Road bidding process? Dare I put you on the spot?
Sure. So, we had comments back from the DOT on our PS&amp;E submission, which is essentially our construction documents. That will be the bid package or the core of the bid package that's put out to public bid. So, the DOT had comments back. We've responded to those comments, and we'll be submitting within the next day or two. We then await any additional comments. They could have additional comments. We're hoping they don't. The majority of the comments back were quite minor. So, the next step would get, getting that approval, formalizing the bid documents and bid package, and then going out to public bid. So, I know it's hard to put an exact timeline on it, but we're hopeful that we'll be out to bid by late spring, maybe early summer. Again, it all depends on what type of feedback we get from the DOT.
All right. So, inching forward. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the county, in their call with us today, indicated that there are some large group activities that are going to be postponed, and one of them is the open house regarding the future development of the airport. They are, county has engaged a process to consider the master plan for the airport, and I know that is a matter of significant concern to some of our constituents, as well as our neighbors in Newcastle and North Castle, who are particularly affected by the flight paths. So, at any rate, that was going to happen in the next couple of weeks. That has been postponed, although they hope for not too long. So, we will announce when we get a new date on that, but if the airport, its expansion or its modification or flight paths are a particular concern of yours, you might want to go to the county website, westchestergov.com, and keep an eye on the development of the airport master plan. Anybody else have reports, commentary? All right.
I have one.
Okay.
Just a reminder, the village election.
Oh, gosh.
Tell me this.
Thank you.
Wednesday, March 18, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We have three locations. Election districts 13, 14, and 20 will be at 48 Marble Avenue at the Rec Center. District 15 will be at the Daniel Hayes Hose Company House, 134 Bedford Road. 31 and 43 will be at Emmanuel Lutheran Church, 97 Manville Road. All of this information will be published in the Examiner for the next two Tuesdays, and will be going on our website as well as tomorrow.
Thank you. I had that as my first announcement and then never did it, so. You can also take a look at the Westchester County Board of Elections website, which is citizenparticipation.westchestergov.com, and I believe there is also a search function there that allows you to identify your election district. So, there are three voting locations, and you have to vote in the one that's specific to your district. So, if you didn't get that postcard in the mail, or if you got it and had lost it, you can check it out at citizenparticipation.westchestergov. There are two trustee positions up. It is an uncontested election on the ballot. Our esteemed colleague, Mr. Stephen Board, has elected to hang up his spurs, and we'll have more to say about that soon. Nicole Asbuthabson tonight is running again for reelection, as is Paul Alvarez, a new member of the board. So, even though it's an uncontested election, we do encourage folks to go and vote. And again, citizenparticipation.westchestergov.com, Tuesday, March 18. There was some discussion today in the county call about whether the coronavirus concern would have any effect on elections. As of today, there was no discussion that it would, and with three voting districts in an uncontested election in Pleasantville, I doubt that we're likely to be generating crowds. But again, I do encourage folks to vote. Thank you for that, Noreen. Anything else? Comment or question from the public? There being none, off we go to Resolution 55, which dovetails to this commentary that the senator made a little bit earlier.
And I think because of that, I'll read all of it.
I think you should read the whole thing, I do.
Okay. Whereas, while there was a need to reform New York's criminal justice statutes during the 2019 state legislative session, it is widely recognized that several of the drastic changes in the laws pertaining to discovery are overly broad and vague, and are having unintended consequences at the municipal level. And whereas the dramatically shortened time period in which prosecutors must disclose evidence to defendants, and the broad expansion of the matters to which such discovery mandates apply will have significant cost, tax, and justice implications for cities and villages with police departments, local justice courts, or code/parking enforcement departments, and whereas the discovery reforms mandate prosecutors disclose evidence to the defense within 15 days of arraignment for criminal charges, even if the defendant is not in custody. And whereas drastically enlarging the scope of material that a prosecutor must review and deliver within 15 days will overwhelm the ability of city and village officials and employees to prosecute cases while managing their misdemeanor and felony caseloads, and will make it impossible to prosecute vehicle and traffic and local code infractions and violations in compliance with the new discovery mandates. And whereas arraignment must now take place within 20 days of desk appearance ticket issuance, I guess, desk appearance ticket issuance, thereby requiring justice courts, many of which convene monthly, to meet more frequently. And whereas cities and villages will not reap savings from the bail reforms' reduction of the burden on country jails, sorry, county jails, and whereas municipalities are already challenged with operating within the now-permanent 2% tax cap and have not received an increase in general-purpose state aid in 11 years. Now therefore be it resolved that the village of Pleasantville supports the following set of amendments proposed by the New York State Conference of Mayors that are consistent with the intent of the criminal justice reforms, but which allow for more effective and affordable implementation. First one, ensure that cities and villages are provided with additional financial and operational support to offset the cost of these mandated measures. Second one, allow 60 days for prosecutors to disclose evidence to the defense for criminal charges. Third one, exclude from the accelerated discovery requirements any charge not involving a misdemeanor or felony. Fourth one, adjust the 20-day arraignment requirement to accommodate local courts that meet on a monthly basis. And finally, allow prosecutors to withhold sensitive information such as victim contact information without having to obtain a court order. And be it further resolved that this duly adopted resolution of the village of Pleasantville be forwarded to Governor Andrew Cuomo, Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins, Assembly Speaker Carl Easte, Senator Peter Harken, and Assembly Member Thomas Avenatti, the New York State Conference of Mayors, and local media outlets.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, as a civics geek may know, New York State has three classes of governments, cities, towns, and villages. And the reason cities and villages are referred to here and not towns is not that we're not all, I think of generally speaking, of similar view, but because the New York Conference of Mayors represents cities and villages, there is a parallel effort going on with the Association of Towns, which represents towns. And the goal here for communities that wish to participate in this effort led by the New York Conference of Mayors is to have a parallel statement. So, I think we certainly would include towns in this, but the Association of Towns is pursuing a similar venture directly. So, we have run this by Judge Curley and Judge Collins and our justice court staff, and they're in agreement with us. I've had a couple of extended discussions in the context of New York Conference of Mayors and the Westchester Municipal Officials Association, and can report that the limitations, or that is, the 15-day requirement for discovery ultimately means that a local police department needs to produce all the discovery within six or seven days in order to give it to the county district attorney's office, so that the district attorney's office can do their piece of it. So, it's really just an extremely difficult process, and as you have heard in the text of this, it's our belief that the spirit of these reforms can be preserved while the practical aspects of it get significantly improved. So, any comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
So, do we know what the average length of time between the filing charges and trial is?
That varies widely.
Well, the reason I ask that is because it makes perfect sense what you're saying about 15 days being too short.
Right.
But on the other hand, you know, five days may be too short to prepare a fair defense.
I don't think that any aspect of this means that the defendant would not receive all the discovery in a timely manner to allow their defense. Honestly, we had a presentation by the Westchester District Attorney's Office at the municipal officials' meeting a couple of months ago, and he said, "Absent more resources, they are going to end up in a bit of a triage process to simply say, 'Some cases will default because they can't fulfill it.'"
But the question is, why was this in the original act to begin with, the 15 days? That must be responding to something.
Well, the idea was, part and parcel to bail reform, where cash bail was largely eliminated, was to try to say, I think right-mindedly, that folks who were charged with something ought to, A, not be incarcerated just because of lack of money, because in many of these cases, folks who had money were able to buy their way out of incarceration, but also that they should be entitled to the discovery very quickly. Turns out that in many, many cases, for example, any case where there are lab reports that are due back, whatever, DNA, blood, whatever, that nearly impossible to get back on that timeframe. And add to that, that in circumstances where there are video potentially from police sources, video from body cameras, which we do not have in Pleasantville, but which some bigger departments do have, video from adjacent private property would all have to be assembled, burned off to a DVD, returned. It's just not realistic on the timeframe available without a whole lot more people. So, I hardly put myself in the shoes of someone who can say with any certainty how it ought to work, but I can say with some certainty, having talked to a whole lot of people, that 15 days is just not enough.
Yeah, so I guess my question is simply that, you know, this obviously, this requirement must respond to people not getting, the defendants not getting evidence in time for their trial, right? Otherwise-
I don't think it's, again, I don't think it's that. I think- I think it's just an attempt to speed everything up.
That's right.
Which is a worthy goal, but, you know...
Is there a definition of what other sensitive information prosecutors might be able to withhold?
Well, again, one of the, and I don't claim to be an expert on this, but one of the issues was that prosecutors at the moment, prior to this, were able to withhold, for example, the identity of some involved parties, like if you burglarized a house. Obviously, the home that was burglarized would rather not have the details about their identity and personal circumstances divulged. In the end, it does get divulged, but to have it divulged at the point when nobody's quite sure, the investigation is still going on, felt to a lot of people premature, and there surely was some concern among various aspects of the law enforcement world, that folks might even elect not to pursue charges if it resulted in their early exposure in the process. So... Further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 56 Joe.
Whereas, by resolution of approval of the subdivision and site plan approval for the Pleasantville Loft LLC, 70 Memorial Plaza, adopted by the Planning Commission on July 10, 2019, the applicant is required to provide a performance bond, a letter of credit or other security in a form acceptable to the village attorneys and approved by the Village Board of Trustees. And whereas this guarantee is to be submitted as a condition precedent to the signing of the subdivision plat to secure to the village the satisfactory construction, installation, and completion of certain public improvements. And whereas Pleasantville LLC has submitted a collateral pledge agreement and executed a side letter agreement to satisfy the condition precedent. And whereas the collateral pledge agreement and side letter agreement require that a letter of credit will be provided in the amount of $550,000 prior to the issuance of a certain building permit to guarantee the construction, installation, and completion of the public improvements. And whereas the village attorney has reviewed the collateral pledge agreement and side letter agreement and find it to be in acceptable form to satisfy the condition precedent, now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the acceptance of the collateral pledge agreement and side letter agreement described herein, and a copy of the collateral agreements are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, a couple of little typo patch-ups here. I think in the resolution headline, it should be lofts plural, Pleasantville Lofts LLC. And also in the first line, site plan approval for Pleasantville Lofts. And then in the 1, 2, 3, third, whereas, again, Pleasantville Lofts LLC has submitted a collateral pledge agreement. Is the mover and seconder accept those typos?
Accept.
So, Eric, do you want to just describe this?
Sure. So, as a condition of their Planning Commission approval, they had to issue a surety or a guarantee for the public improvements on Cooley Street. They want to initially provide a collateral pledge agreement, which we are okay with. We prefer a letter of credit. So, initially, they're going to put up this collateral pledge agreement until about the summer, when they're going to move on to their actually building permits, and they're going to issue a letter of credit for $550,000. So, they won't be issued the actual building permit until that time. That'll be their second building permit. We'll issue a first building permit for the pouring of concrete for the foundation. Their second building permit, which is the most substantial, will be the steelwork. So, we will not allow them to do work on Cooley Street until we have that letter of security. Any work on Cooley Street will have to be done under a cash bond. So, they'll have to, they're going to get out there and do some initial drainage work that'll cross Cooley Street, and they're going to post cash bond for that work. But the majority of that will not happen until we get that letter of credit.
So, just to be clear, this is a mechanism by which we fulfill the requirement in the village code to make certain that anyone who is required by their site plan approval to do work on our property, to be working on public utilities, puts up a letter of creditor bond to make certain that they deliver on it. We have absolutely no reason to think there will be any need for that, but it is a form of melter's dispenders to make certain that the public is protected. So, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. David 57.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves a salary increase for Sean Tiffany to $59,372, CSCB Labor, CDL Step 1, effective April 11, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 58 Steve.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring for part-time available recreation assistant, job code 0269, Nicole Caffiola, at a rate of $50 an hour, effective March 7, 2020, for Program A7324.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's a babysitting class through a... All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 59 Joe.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby institutes a no parking every Saturday from 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM from March 14, 2020 to November 28, 2020, as follows. A Memorial Plaza parking lot, both sides from the gazebo to the end of the parking lot in northerly direction, and parking meters, numbers 132, 133, 134, 135, 136, and 137, across the street from the Pleasantville Diner. Further resolved, that the police department is hereby authorized to post no parking signs and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, what this reflects is, as folks know normally, the farm market, which is in the winter inside of the middle school cafeteria, goes outside in April.
April.
But given the concerns about coronavirus and the like, we are establishing this authorization that would allow them to move outside sooner if it develops, that that's a logical thing to do. So, no certainty when they would actually do it. It could be as early as this weekend, but again, you should take a look at the Pleasantville Farm Market website to determine if there's any change. As of the moment, everything is going on as normal, farm market in the middle school cafeteria on Saturdays from 8:00 to 1:00. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 60.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on February 24, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, corrections? All in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Motion approved. Number 61, Steve.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement with OnSol for Code Red Emergency Notification Services, June 1, 2020, effective June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, for a fee of $4,489.20.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, this is the annual subscription fee to participate in the Code Red Emergency Notification System that I mentioned earlier. Again, we really encourage everybody to sign up, and we also encourage folks who might have an interest in looking after someone or someone's property in the Village of Pleasantville. Anybody can sign up for it. Go to pleasantville-ny.gov, left-hand column, sign up for Code Red. What it means is that we will then have a mechanism to reach out to you by cell phone, by email, by landline phone, any of various different ways that you may care to get reached. As I've mentioned in the past, during Superstorm Sandy, it became clear to us and so many other municipalities that when folks were out of power, in some cases, folks were living elsewhere, the business of contacting everybody was difficult. Code Red is a great way to get around that. It is a service we hope and effort to use and certainly will not be using except in an emergency condition, but we very much encourage people to sign up and don't have as much participation as we wish we had. So, get thee to pleasantville-ny.gov and sign up. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 62 Joe.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of the claims dated March 9, 2020, for fiscal year 2020, covering checks number 96284 to 96446 as listed below, from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Capital Fund, the Refuge Fund, and the Trust Fund, for a total of $381,359.65.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions about the check register? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. We're going to retreat into an executive session on matters of personnel and real estate, but prior to doing that, I just want to remind everybody, sign up for our Pleasantville news feed. You can do that at pleasantville-ny.gov. That will be a great way to hear what we have to say about the coronavirus situation. You can also, as I mentioned, go to the state or county health department sites. And lastly, extend another thank you to State Senator Peter Harkman for coming and sharing his perspective on what's going on in Albany, and thanks to Angela and Shane for representing our community and the school board on that occasion. So, is there a motion to go into executive session on matters of personnel and real estate?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. So, again, our next regular meeting is in two weeks, on March 23, but we do have a work session in one week on the 16th, working on the budget. Thank you. See you soon.